Hello. I think we're gonna get this session started. I'm Daniel with Jewish Voice Research, East Nebraska, moderating this session for Karen. And this session's on de-escalation. I'm just gonna introduce Karen real quick and then she'll be on her way. So Karen Chide is a librarian at Omaha Public Library, a student of social justice movements and a community activist. She's done everything from shelving books to managing library buildings to coordinating staff development throughout her 15 years at OPL and is proud to have served in six of Omaha's vibrant neighborhoods as a librarian. As a community organizer, she's worn many hats, bringing folks together to swap clothes, confront the local prison industrial complex, create supportive queer, non-monogamous spaces and discuss strategies for socialist future. Karen believes that strong social skills like creative conflict intervention, emotional regulation and de-escalation are essential to building resilient and welcoming movements for social change. None of us are free until all of us are free. She is honored to support skill building and our movement for a free Palestine. Welcome Karen.
Hi guys, I'm glad to be here. Thank you for showing up to learn more with your peers who support a free Palestine. I'm excited to get started on this workshop. I've done a lot of de-escalation in my job. It's a very different thing to do it for your job than it is maybe to do it for a group or at a protest, but I've done it in several different contexts. And then I think it's kind of a good idea to funnel this away that if you have a skillset and you begin to practice de-escalation as a skillset, you can use it in many contexts, including just in your neighborhood or on the street if you're seeing someone in distress and needing, who's needing help regulating themselves. So kind of keep that in mind that this is like something to put in your toolbox for so many different situations and it's something you can use to help all kinds of people in your community. So as Daniel said, I've worked in the public library system for 15 years. About six of those years were managing libraries. So I was like the go-to for if there was any kind of tense situation or someone was having maybe like a breakdown or some emotional regulation problems, I would be called in. And I'm leveraging some of those skills and some of that experience today, but a lot of the material I'm covering today is actually from a de-escalation workshop that was delivered by Brian Bean, who is a Chicago-based activist and a contributor to the book Palestine: A Socialist Introduction. It's pretty cool. So some of this is taken from him and some of it is also taken from a group called Interrupting Criminalization. And their aim is to build a world free of violence, surveillance, policing and punishment. That sounds like a world I'd like to live in. And they're doing a lot of work to ensure that we can de-escalate situations before police are needed to get involved so that less people go to jail is the bigger idea. So that's another thing to follow in the back of your mind as far as context for how you can positively impact the world with this tool. Okay, so why are we doing this workshop at an event for Palestine? What connection did you guys make? I'll be asking a lot of questions, by the way, today and like we're gonna do a little roleplay. So sorry and you're welcome. So yeah, what connection do you make to the Palestine movement with this workshop? Anybody can shout out. Yeah, yeah, protest, a protest context is big, yeah. Anything else? Anyone else like make a connection? Yeah, yeah, definitely. Yeah, yeah, you can use it in any context. I was kind of reflecting on this because I was like, de-escalation, okay, but then there's the Palestine connection. I was trying to make a connection a little bit in my mind. And I was just thinking about like the history of escalating and like sort of diffusing violence in Palestine. There's like a history of many like escalations over a period of decades that have happened here and we've just seen like one of the worst escalations of violence that's happened in history. So that's like on a massive scale, not on an individual level. And I guess I just wanted to say too that in my opinion escalation is not always bad, like it's about the context. So in certain contexts, keep in mind too that escalation can be used as a tool of resistance, should be used as a tool of resistance against powerful aggressors. So kind of hold that in your mind too. It doesn't necessarily have to be a violent escalation. That's not per se what I'm talking about, but you know, there can be escalations in terms of larger and larger protests. There can be escalations in terms of strikes, sabotage, civil disobedience. You know, we're talking like purposefully inciting mass arrests. That's an escalation to bring attention to something. So I guess like I want people to walk away to not thinking escalation's bad, de-escalation good, because it's really not that black and white. De-escalation is a tool of resistance as well. They're just two different tools that should be used in different contexts. So yeah, de-escalation can serve to counteract violent escalation, decrease our reliance on police and help protect our neighbors from being injured, traumatized, thrown in jail, or even killed maybe. You just don't know what's gonna happen when things are getting out of control. So yeah, just to hold that in the back of your mind. We're going to cover what is happening in the brain of someone who is experiencing a crisis or a stress response. We're going to talk about what people need to get out of a state of stress or like escalated stress response. We're gonna talk about communication tactics that you can use to get someone to come down. And we're gonna talk about self-awareness, which is thinking about yourself and what like, what strengths do you bring to the table in this context? Like what do you have going for you that could project a feeling of safety on a situation, that could project a feeling of calm? We all have different strengths and you need to like start reflecting on what is it that you're bringing to the situation that could be a good de-escalator? We're not gonna cover today how to control someone. None of us can do that, sorry. We're not gonna cover combat training, I don't know how to do that, or how to disarm someone or anything like that. So that's kind of where the line is. And then trigger warning, we're gonna be talking about and reenacting some situations. We'll do a little bit of roleplay in which people are yelling and becoming angry. And if that is triggering to you or any other content, please feel free to just like step out of the hall, take a moment, get some water, take a breather and come back in when you feel ready. So yeah, my first question to you, or my second question is, what is, oh, we talked about why de-escalation, sorry, I'm not keeping up with my power warning. What is a crisis? Anybody have a good definition for like what a person in crisis means? Or how would you describe that?
Someone in a place where they cannot no longer self-regulate.
That's a really good definition, yes. Anyone have anything to add to that? Yeah?
I couldn't think of it, like what you said on, like on the micro level, but then also it could be on a macro level too. I mean, taking what you said to a large group.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, when you've got like a whole group that's dysregulated, yeah, that can happen for sure.
Or being controlled by people who are dysregulated.
Yes, yes, absolutely, all of the above. Anything else you would add to that definition? Okay, that's good, that's a good start. I would define it as when an individual's coping skills are overwhelmed by a stress response. Yeah, but I like the idea of like there's a macro level or like a, you know, a group kind of definition to a crisis too. But yeah, if we're talking on the individual level, it's when their coping skills are overwhelmed. Their survival brain turns on, they start to react with that flight, fight, freeze reaction. And they're having a physiological response to the stress at that point. They're not, that they're not able to control is what's happening. So yeah, it's, keep in mind that when a person is in crisis, they're not thinking clearly, they're reacting. Now, I want us to get acquainted with each other a little bit and I would love for you guys to turn to someone next to you, preferably someone you haven't met yet, and introduce yourself and talk about a time when you were super scared, angry or upset and how did it feel, what did your body do? How did your body react that was out of control? I'm gonna give you like two minutes, go. So one more minute, one more minute. All right, let's come back, let's bring it back. We could talk about this all day, I'm sure. Sorry, real quick, we're gonna like try and keep it moving pretty quick here from now on because we got some roleplay to do later too. So what were some of the things that you guys brought up when you were talking? Some of the reactions that you've experienced when you're up here, angry, upset, scared? Just shout them out.
numb.
Numb.
My legs got sore so much that when I got on that elevator, it was really.
Yes, jittery legs, jittery, numb, jittery, what else?
We talked about fawning, like a fawn response when somebody you want to give to go away or better, so if it's somebody in front of you that's causing you distress, you think you please them and make them happy, get it over, stop it.
Oh yeah, yeah, trying to people-please your way out of it, yeah, interesting, yes. What else?
Block out.
Blocking out, just kind of like brain goes dark a little bit, yeah. Definitely can happen, what else?
Freeze.
Freezing, yes, yes. Hyperventilating. Heart racing, yes, heart racing, definitely.
Throwing up.
Throwing up, yeah, definitely, that's like a physiological response, it happens, yeah. What else?
Dissociation, kind of like you can observe what's going on and then you feel like you're out of it.
Dissociation. Yeah, that's almost like a freeze response, right? You're like outside of yourself, you can't really do anything, you know, yeah. What else?
Feeling of fighting.
Yeah, yeah, wanting to fight, wanting to get physical. Yeah, what else?
Emotional disregulation.
Yeah, your emotions are just all over the place, you can't really rein them in. Yeah, this is all good stuff, yeah. I definitely had like shaking too, sweating, you start like pouring sweat, tunnel vision. You know, you can't even see peripherally sometimes, time slowing down. You know, so it's a little bit like disassociating, like things start changing with your perspective. Hard to talk, does anyone get that way or they like can't speak? Yeah, I do too. And just sort of like a general feeling of out-of-control-ness. And there's a reason for that, I feel like knowing what is happening is very helpful when you are de-escalating someone so you can stay on the outside and observe all their brains doing this. Keep in mind too, crises look different depending on different situations and different people. So what you see on the outside, you know, like you're looking for clues to see that this person is dysregulated, but it might not be obvious, you know? You've got the people who are like, "I'm fine," and you're like, "Ew, are you?" So yeah, you're kind of looking for typical or atypical behavior given the context you're in, right? Like if you're in a protest setting, atypical behavior might be person starts pacing back and forth in a weird spot and it's something you notice and you're like, hmm, what's going on there, you know? Just something that makes you go, hmm. So yeah, keep in mind that context is everything. So what's happening to your brain when this is happening, right? Like this is a little bit, so trying brain model, FYI is like a little bit outdated, like, but it's also like what science uses for a simple brain model to break down what happens where. So bear with me. Yeah, we've got your survival brain, emotional brain, executive brain, they're all doing different things. That brain stem is the like reptilian brain, right? It's like, it's the automatic stuff that happens. You can't really control much of what happens in that part of the brain. And that's the part of the brain, that red part that is going to signal danger when it sees danger, it's going to like start, to like start things in motion in your brain to like get you ready for a dangerous situation. The amygdala detects something scary, says danger, sends a signal to the hypothalamus in the limbic brain, which wakes up the pituitary gland, secretes the hormone, starts up your adrenal gland, your adrenaline starts going. Adrenaline floods the body, your heart rate and breathing will automatically increase at that point. And then your green part, the smart part of your brain, the executive brain, that is supposed to help intervene and regulate you and like, and say, no, 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 not danger, it's fine. But that just doesn't always happen for whatever reason. Sometimes it's not fine, so that green part doesn't interrupt in order to let you protect yourself. But sometimes you become dysregulated and the green part, like the executive brain, doesn't intervene for other reasons too. So that's like, that's the way it's working in general. Your brain at rest, like that smart part of your brain, the executive part, it controls your ability to talk, identify and solve problems, control your desires and impulso, set any kind of goal, even for an outcome of a conversation, and just regulate all of your emotions. And then, you know, when you experience a crisis, everything is offline. You just do not have access to a lot of functions in that part of your brain. So, so yeah, it's just, it's gonna give you perspective on, you know, when a person's out of control, they really don't have control. They can't just say the thing they need to say, they can't just do the thing they need to do. They're pretty shut down, so that's just some perspective for what you're walking into, right? Social buffering is a nice term for you to take away. So social buffering is when social support from another person helps people to come down and regulate the body's stress response. That's like, an example would be like a parent comforting a child in a target who's just like totally breaking down in the line at target. So like, that's social buffering. A friend talking you through a stressful situation when you're shaking and crying is social buffering too. So that's essentially what we're trying to do. And yeah, and essentially you're trying to help get the executive brain back online when a person is in crisis. So that's like our full strategy. Now you know what's happening, now you know like where we're trying to get from A to B. We can talk about, a little bit about how we do that. There's, oh, we've got some objectives too, sorry. I wanted to mention these two before we get too into it. So in addition to getting people back online, we want to ensure everyone's safety. That includes people who are around this person too. So that's one of our things that we're looking to do, we're helping, we're trying to help the person manage their distress and get a handle on their behavior too. Trying to avoid making the situation worse, that's actually kind of a big one. We talked about how some groups like Interrupting Criminalization are teaching de-escalation in order to intervene so less people go to jail. That's really, really important. We don't need people who shouldn't be going to jail going to jail just because their brains are going offline, right? So that's a big deal. And then making sure everyone in the situation has agency. I mean, you can't really have agency if your brain's offline and you can't really have agency if someone is out of control around you harassing you or something like that. So yeah, just kind of trying to like smooth things over. There are four ingredients to de-escalation. The first one is self-awareness, like we talked about, and we'll explore that a little bit. The second one is observation, assessment then, and skills listening and communication. And you're not just gonna do one after another in a linear way. You're probably gonna do like, kind of swirl around all of them throughout the interaction. So we need to start with our self-awareness. First thing is to be very aware of your body and your mental and emotional state and really ask yourself, am I centered and controlled enough to handle this de-escalation role? Can I de-escalate or am I gonna step in and get escalated immediately? So you've gotta check it in order to do that. Trying to regulate yourself so that you don't do anything stupid is like a skill and it takes practice like any skill, so we have to practice doing that. And then self-awareness also includes, oh yeah, we need to check in with your body, think about how you come across the others, this is a big one too. You need to be aware of how you're perceived in certain contexts and how you might be able to create a feeling of safety or not in certain contexts. So if you're younger, you can ask yourself, is this helpful? Since I'm among like young people right now, or if I'm among older people, is that helpful? Is that something I can use to my advantage? How could I do that, right? Like it's kind of, you have to be a bit strategic about that. You know, you need to look too at like, what if you're white in that space that, you know, maybe there's people who aren't gonna respond super well to that? It just depends on the context you're in, right? What if you're wearing super nice clothes and no one else is? How are they gonna receive you coming into their interaction, right? What if you have a naturally big voice? Like, how is that gonna be received? That might be really helpful in certain contexts. If you're at a protest and you have to talk loud anyway, very good. But yeah, you gotta think about all of those things. And now I want you to go back to your partners and think and talk a little bit about what you bring to a de-escalation situation, what skills, what values? What traits do you have that might be useful in de-escalating a crisis? I'm gonna give you two minutes against you, I don't have a hurry, but go. All right, we're gonna bring it back. Thank you guys. I'm curious to know if anyone wants to share what they thought they had going for them as far as like being an asset in a de-escalation situation? Anyone clear to share?
Sometimes like, yeah, like sharing about ourselves, right?
Yeah.
For me, I've noticed that I'm really, I guess people tell me I'm a good person and I'm actually like trusted by people when they've found stress to get through. Stressful situations or I can only like relate to like more like a production. Being successful, so being able to put someone in, listening, completely, I mean, keep that one.
Listening is key, making people feel heard is key, yes.
Um, just like keeping a level high and making sure that like the exact part of your brain is still functioning in that situation. So I can like think of possible solutions with this, I need to focus.
Yeah, you're good at keeping your cool, that's very important, that's good. You don't wanna be up there with them five minutes in, you know? Yeah, that's good. Anybody else? Yeah?
What I said, it's kind of, I don't know, it's kind of weird to say, but like escalation to de-escalate, like putting your body on the line to like separate people. If people start getting rowdy, depending on how it's going, you don't want it to get to the point where there's so many people piling into a situation where like people could be getting jumped, like stomping each other. But there is a point where you have to put your body on the line to actually stop something from escalating, right?
So you're willing to kind of just do what it takes?
Yeah, like just get in there.
Whatever that means, yeah, that's good. What else? Yes, you're good at controlling your body language. That's really important. That can be hard. Anyone else have a good asset? Yeah?
I work with kids in a sort of daycare area for a while. And I think that's really the ability to kind of like tune out what's going on and just like always approach things in a very like calm, it's gonna be okay. And we're all just like tall children.
You're practiced at de-escalation, basically. That's what you're saying. You're a professional. You're a childcare person. You definitely are. Yeah, absolutely. Those are great. That's great. I'm glad you guys mentioned some of those because we're gonna like circle back to a few of them. So move on just to observation. Situational awareness is gonna be something that you're gonna need. And I think some people have that naturally, maybe a little more than others. So I guess it's a matter too of are you in a role where you have to pay attention as you're designated to de-escalate things? Because I was in my job for a while. I was like, I'm the one, therefore I have to be paying attention all the time to what's going on. But yeah, maybe you're a person who just always has situational awareness. You see something off, you are the first person to notice it right away. That would be an asset. Regardless, you wanna stay aware of the situation throughout the interaction and everything that's happening around you. Again, you wanna ask yourself, is the behavior I'm seeing typical or atypical in this context? And another good example of that is like you're in a sports bar. Is the person yelling? Like, is that a normal behavior for a sports bar? There may be many people yelling at the TV and then, you know, you begin to tune that behavior out. But there may be some atypical behavior for a sports bar too. For example, a person who's like crying and shaking in the corner, not used to seeing that at a sports bar. So I guess that's what we mean by atypical or typical for the context. It's always context dependent. What seems like the usual behavior? You wanna look for warning signs that a person is in distress too. That could be just like clenched fists, fists clenched really tight, that body language, that tense body language. Excessive sweating, heavy breathing, a challenging demeanor. You can kind of tell when people, you know, are feeling aggressive sometimes. So yeah, look for those signs. And you have to stay open and curious throughout the interaction. To me, that means like just kind of telling myself, I may be mistaken about what I'm seeing. Or I might be misreading the situation. I need more information. So yeah, keep your mind open to the fact that you're not sure what's going on until you get more information. So assessment is, you know, you're doing as you're observing, but also after. And you're asking yourself some questions. One of those questions is, what is this person's behavior telling me about their needs? You're looking for clues, right, as to what's going on? Because again, let's go back to that brain function thing. They might not be able to tell you. Let's be real. They might not be able to talk in their state that they're in. Or might not be able to communicate very well, at least. You're gonna ask yourself, how can I meet those needs? And if not, what options can I offer? You know, you, when you're a de-escalator, you're there to help in whatever way, provide visible support to the person. So you gotta start thinking about that. And then you're gonna ask yourself too, is this person's thinking or behavior impaired? And impaired is a broad term. It could mean drunk. It could mean on drugs. It could mean on a prescription that's not working for them. It could mean they literally have like a brain impairment or injury of some kind. You know, we don't know. Like, if you don't know this person, you might not have a lot of context for it. So you can look for signs of impairment because honestly, the signs of impairment are like pretty universal regardless of whether it's any one of those situations. So you're looking for impaired behavior. And what that will tell you is if a person indeed is impaired, it's gonna be harder and it's gonna take longer to de-escalate them. You kind of have to like assess that situation for yourself. And then you wanna look out for your own safety. Where are the exits? Like, are they behind me? Are they to the side? Like, where are the exits for this person who's in distress? So like, keep that environmental awareness around you too, so that you're not tacking yourself into a corner. Like I said, you're gonna need to assess and reassess throughout those observation stages. So now we're getting into the fun part, communication part and skilled listening. And we'll talk about what reflective listening and reflective responses means a little bit. But basically, it's like a form of active listening. And for those of you who know what I mean by active listening, you know, it's like it's like you listen and then you tell the person back what they just said. Just so that the person, so what you're telling me is blank, you know? That's active listening. You need to be aware of your body language and your tone. You need to be super aware of this because body language is what they're reading mostly. They may not even be able to listen to the words that you're saying very well. So get your face right, get your body right, in a good stance that projects calm, safe, you know? You're going to need to acknowledge their feelings too. That's part of that active listening loop. Like, it sounds like you're feeling really upset. And then you're gonna need to convey respect, confidence, helpfulness and calm throughout the interaction in your words and in your demeanor. There are two possible outcomes when you're intervening in a crisis with someone. You are either gonna escalate them further or you're gonna de-escalate them. So there's, you know, there's just those two. And you gotta ask yourself, like, what can I do to not provoke any counter-aggression? And you know, you can assess too, like, is this tactic working? No, it's not. Let's back it off and like start over again. We're gonna partner up again. This time, we're gonna have one person role-playing as a person in crisis. And the other person is trying to talk them down. So the person in crisis, maybe they're breathing heavy, their fists are clenched, their voices raised, they're mad. And the other partner is going to try and ask them some questions, say some things to help bring them down. We'll go for another couple minutes and I'll yell "switch" too when we're about halfway through. So ready, set, go. Thirty more seconds. Alright, bring it back. Thank you. Let's bring it back. We don't have too much time left. We got a little bit more to get through. Thank you for indulging me in the role-play part. I think it's, I think it's good to practice, honestly. What are you gonna say? What are you gonna do? So I wanna get into communication strategies a little bit. Maybe we'll have time for you to see Daniel and I fight up front. We're not gonna fight, actually, but we may do a role-play. And then we'll wrap it up. So crisis communication strategies. The first is non-verbal communication. So if you're approaching someone who's in crisis, you're gonna wanna have soft eye contact. You're gonna need to pay attention to your whole face. Especially if you have mask off. What's your mouth doing? You're gonna need to have an open stance. So that looks like this. Not this, not this. Not this, certainly not this. This one, arms this side, even though it may feel awkward. You just, you know, what's going on, right? If you've got hands in pockets, hands behind your back, someone might think you have something. It can feel really threatening to people. If you've got hands on hips, it looks very aggressive to people. They're in trouble. So people are like reading what your body's doing. Again, the smart brain is offline. Only the dumb brain is there when they're in crisis. So you need to, you need to think, what is the least threatening? And that really is like open hands in front of you. You're making yourself vulnerable that way. Yeah, what's a question?
Sorry to backtrack a tiny bit. What does soft eye contact mean? Is that just like making sure your eyes look like neutral?
Good question. Yeah, I think it's a little hard to interpret, but like intense eye contact is like looking at someone very intensely and not breaking. And like not looking away at all. Soft eye contact might be just like you look in and then you, you know, you're looking over here and you're nodding and then you're like looking away a little bit. Yeah, great question. Yeah, so like maybe breaking eye contact here and there, but also like making eye contact enough to show you're listening.
I think this is gonna sound really like, it's gonna sound maybe a little compensating and then it's probably gonna give ten. And it's like what you're saying about the dumb brain. I think if you think about it from, if you were approaching a scary animal. And I only say that because it is the animal, the familiar part of the brain that's activated. So the way you would approach like a dog that might be aggressive or like maybe a wild animal, again, it's not a flip to the same thing to the person. It's just, that's the part of the brain that's most activated. So you wouldn't keep staring down the dog, right? That's what's really activated. You wouldn't wanna kind of like do anything that would, that would suggest that you're gonna attack or and that kind of, if you approached it that way, it might be.
That's a good way to put it. Yeah, yeah. Open hands, showing your hands and everything, you know? Showing that you're safe, basically. You have to project that with your body. Yeah, so open stance, soft eye contact, paying attention to your facial expressions, you know? People can tell too when you're nervous or tense. So try to get that out of your face. Tone your voice low and slow. Again, they're gonna have a hard time possibly understanding you. So low and slow. Talk in the tone that you want them to talk in. If they're up here, if they're yelling, you're down here. It's okay, you know? So yeah, and be intentional with your volume too. Intentional volume, like I said, we're talking in a lot of contexts. Maybe you're in a crowd. Maybe like a good intentional volume is this if you're in a very loud place so that they can hear you. And then yeah, just keep in mind that these non-verbals are often way more important than your verbal communication. Like, you're gonna communicate like ninety percent of the safety factor through your body and your face. So so pay close attention to that. You want to use some question techniques. So open and closed questions. Open questions to uncover what is wrong with the person in crisis. Hey, what's going on here? Can I help? You know, what can I do to help? That kind of thing. Open questions are also requiring a person to think. So tell me what's going on. That is starting, if it's requiring the person to think, it's starting to pull the executive brain back online. It's like requiring like the juice from that part of the brain. So so that is good to ask them questions, get them talking. And you wanna keep that person talking as much as possible. Because the more they talk and try and communicate with you, the more that like part of the brain is going to have to come back online, be forced to, in order to talk to you. So keep the person talking. You're going to use reflective responses too, which is that active listening plus some emotional intelligence. So that is listening and making an educated guess as to how they might be feeling and then reflecting that back to them. You need like to give them validation and catharsis during this moment. So and keep in mind, I like this like phrase, unable feeling is a tameable feeling. So if they can tell you how they're feeling, that's good. They're like, they're gonna be able to wrap their arms around that and get under control a little bit better. You're trying to facilitate these aha moments about what is going on inside with them. So you're saying things like, like a reflective response would be, it seems like that person really disrespected you. Right? Seems like they really disrespected you, but man, I know how that goes, you know? You're empathizing and validating and getting them to talk. You can say, that's hard. Man, that's really hard. Or that sucks. I am so sorry, you know? You're validating this person to lessen the chance also that they'll direct any aggression toward you. So you need to do that for your safety as well. And just know too, I'm not gonna be able to feed you lines because there really aren't any magic words. A lot of this is very context dependent and they're gonna hopefully be able to start telling you their story about what's going on with them. So keep assessing, keep talking, keep asking. You're just trying to keep the focus on you, drain away some of those crisis emotions and get that executive functioning back online. So with that, Daniel, can I get you to come up so we can have an escalation situation in front of everyone? Cool. I'm just gonna try and talk loud over here. So I want you to stand here, please. And yeah, Daniel is, I've noticed his behavior is pretty escalated. What are you doing, Daniel?
Pissed.
What are you, your hands are on your hips?
Yeah.
You're like pacing around, running hands through your hip, right?
Men said that sandwich was four ninety-nine, not five fifteen.
Great, okay. So I'm gonna start with self-awareness by taking a deep breath. This is gonna ground me and prepare my body to respond the way I want to, right? You wanna take a deep breath before you do anything. Clear your mind with that deep breath. And then give yourself some positive self-talk too. You might be a little nervous to, especially if you don't know this guy, to approach this person. Negative thoughts might start creeping in and you might be like, what are you doing? You have no business approaching this guy. Just give yourself a little pep talk. Say to yourself, I've got this. It sounds so stupid, but it totally works. I've got this. Before you go on in and approach the person. You're gonna wanna stand six to eight feet from the person. Probably don't get too close if you can help it. And you're gonna want to, like I said, pay attention to your face. So, so you know, face is in kind of calm position regardless of how it's feeling inside. So you're gonna wanna look calm, attentive, and maybe a little bit concerned, you know? What's going on? You wanna give the person some validating statements even if you don't agree with them. So I'm gonna approach Daniel. Hey, what's going on? Is there anything I can do?
Yeah, you can give me the manager.
I get it. I get it. You're gonna stop. Yeah, can you tell me what happened?
I don't have enough money to pay for the sandwich anyway.
Yeah, you know what? Why don't we take your seat over here? You can talk to me about what's going on. Yeah, so that's our role-play. You can applaud. Oh yeah, yeah. You wanna, so yeah, when you're around there, wanna make sure you know where exits are, obviously. So that's part of the awareness and observation piece. And another thing to consider is and this may be a little controversial, but you want to send only one person to take points. I know some people are like buddy system, but I know some people are like buddy system, but that can be super intimidating to the person who's in crisis. It can look like they're being attacked by multiple people. And you just don't want to like trigger that response. So, send one person to take point, have another person hang back and watch and make sure everything is safe. So, so yeah, if you're observing someone who's in crisis and you're like, "I maybe need to go check on that person," just say, "Wait here, watch out, watch my back, I got this." Yeah, so something to think about. I think, I don't know if we have time for other role-play, we maybe have like a minute for questions. Oh, we get till seven oh five? Oh, hey, do we want to do questions or role-play? Do you have questions? Okay, let's take questions then.
What are some like phrases that you might use to de-escalate?
Good question. I mean, I think, I think you want to definitely start with questions is the thing and get more information because you're gonna need that to address that particular person's situation. Does that make sense? So, so I do, when I approach people, a lot of times it is like, "Is everything okay? What's up over here, is there something I can help with?" You know, I'm trying to make sure they know I'm here to help and ask them what's going on. Because I don't know. They might be like, "I'm off my meds, I'm freaking out," like, I would not know that, you know? And that changes everything, right, you know? So, that would be my response, I hope that's a satisfactory answer. But definitely start with questions and try and figure out a little bit more. What else, any other questions? Yeah.
I feel like I am like hesitant to intervene because it's like not always something that I know I can help with or solve. Like, how do you engage that?
That is a great question. I have been thinking about that all week. Because like I said, I've been in a designated de-escalator role at work and outside of work. But when I'm not designated, do I always intervene? I have not been great about that all the time. Sometimes it's very intimidating and scary. And I do think like, I think that's something we all can think and talk about as we're evolving as a community, right? Is, how do we want to help our community members? How can we get brave enough to intervene when it's a stranger on the street or in the neighborhood? So, so I just want to reassure you guys, if you've seen someone in crisis and you've walked past them and been like, "Not my business," like, I've done that too, it's okay. Like, you don't have to feel like you're a bad person or anything. Sometimes it doesn't feel safe and you have to assess that for yourself too. I'm not saying we all should be walking in situations where we don't know what's going on all the time. Like, you definitely have to assess whether you're equipped to deal with it or not. But, but like, I do think we could get a little further outside of our comfort zones and do a little more asking if people are okay and like attempting to help them when they're in crisis. So, that's a really good question, I'm really glad you brought it up. What other questions do you guys have? Yeah.
So, when you're in this position, obviously you have to, in terms of your own personal safety, so how do you identify with your, um, that they would require fighting in terms of your own personal safety versus assessing, um, what you have to fear? Because I've also had situations where anxiety or fear is something that's gone and it's been wrong and actually, like, situations that like, it's a big fear that reduces safety.
That's a really good question. Like, what if your body's telling you it's not safe to go approach this person? I do think that's part of the assessment, you need to, because it's, to me, it's like one of two things are happening in that situation. One, you're not ready to do this. Like, if you are feeling like your anxiety's starting to go up, you're not in a good situation to help people. You might just become dysregulated as you join the fray and that's just not helping anyone. Two though, it might be your instincts telling you something is really wrong and this is not like, something about this is not safe. And I do think you need to trust that on some level. Like I said, the skill takes a bit of practice and I've done it enough to feel safe in a lot of situations that every man wouldn't feel safe in. But, doesn't mean you can't help sometimes, doesn't mean you can't start small, doesn't mean you can't start at like a space where you feel really comfortable and feel a lot of ownership in that space. Like, I'm at a friend's party and I see someone kind of freaking out in the corner. If you're like, "I actually feel equipped to help right now," you can help. Like, and you can, you can use these tools in that moment to help. Stranger on the street, you know, person who's really much bigger than you, person you don't know, like maybe that's like a little bit much. So, it's pretty personal, don't, yeah, you don't need to like leave today and be like, "I need to like de-escalate anyone that I see who's like having a crisis," you know? Yeah, just kind of like start with what you're comfortable with and what you actually feel equipped to do. Good question, what else?
I just want to make a comment about the person, question before this last one about not knowing if they can help. This is a very common thing, I'm actually also helping with this here on campus and I do a lot of supervision work here on campus. We use training on crisis intervention, kind of like helping to assess how, like, address somebody who's suicidal. And one of the biggest things that people do say is, "I feel like I'm not equipped to help this person, I don't know how," right? I don't, and I want you to know that your presence in that person's life in that moment, even if it's really brief, really, really matters. The point isn't that you're gonna have a solution to fix it. The point is that you are there to listen and to support, to offer empathy, like human to human. And that makes a massive difference, even if you don't have the answers, right? You might walk away and be like, "I'm so sorry, we don't have a resolution to this," right? "The sandwich is still four ninety-nine, but five fifteen." But, you might, I'm glad that you were able to talk through it. I hope it helped you kind of like work through how you're feeling and I'm here to support you. Like, thank you for sharing that with me. Is there anything else that I can do, but otherwise, I'm just glad that you were able to get that off your chest.
I totally agree. I think like this happened to me a couple months ago, a person who I run into regularly. They're like a member of my peripheral community, I like know them by sight, I sometimes forget their name. We were at an event and they were clearly having some kind of crisis. Their eyes were really wide, they couldn't speak. When I approached them, they just shook their head. Something was happening and I asked them, "Are you okay?" And they shook their head, "No." And then I asked them another question and gave them a couple options. "Do you want to come outside with me? Do you want to do that?" you know? And they shook their head, "No," and they walked off. And they told me later like, "Hey, thanks for checking on me. Like, I wasn't okay, but I'm doing okay now." So it's like, you know, it can be really simple like that too, where you can just have an effect even just by asking, even just by attempting, even if you are not able to like do the whole thing, right? So, I'm glad you brought that up too. I think we're out of time, right? Thank you guys for bearing with me and like rolling with me to this, yes.
Yeah, let's just think Karen one more time. Yeah, so that's the de-escalation workshop. There's the next round starts in like five minutes, ten minutes? So the next room's over and then down the hall and it should be labeled for the other session. And this one is, I think it's Ariel's Decent Rengue White, that's I believe. Because she, I just see her sitting outside. Yeah, thank you. What's this? Okay.